Today is May third, twenty twenty three. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Chairman Espinal.
Present.
Vice Chairwoman Peterson.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Councilman Oscar Vargas is absent. Counselor Royas.
Present.
You have four present and one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Item number one is an ordinance and amendment of chapter twenty seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence entitled, "The City of Providence Zoning Ordinance Approved November twenty fourth, two thousand fourteen as amended to change certain text in Article twelve and nineteen regarding college student occupancy dwellings."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We also have a sub A on this. I'll entertain a motion to enter the record, substitution A.
So moved.
Second. What should it say? And second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Also have a couple of exhibits. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into the record, exhibit one.
So moved. Second.
What should it say? It's made a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Do we, uh, do we have any presenters on this item? Counselor, Anthony, please. Thank you.
Is it on now? All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the ordinance committee. My name is Helen Anthony. I'm the councilwoman representing Word Two. I introduced the student occupancy ordinance for the following reasons. Wealthy developers have been purchasing multifamily homes near colleges and universities and converting them to dormitory-like housing, in some cases chopping up houses to create nine to eleven bedrooms, for which they are charging high rents. These dormitories are located in the heart of residential neighborhoods and are severely impacting the quality of life. Residents have seen ongoing problems with noise, trash, loud parties, parking problems, the list just goes on. Most recently, a college sports team has taken up residence in one of those houses and is operating it like a fraternity. Some have said, well, why can't you enforce our current ordinances and take care of this problem? I'm going to tell you that I've been trying vigorously since two thousand nineteen and it just doesn't work. Despite a tremendous amount of cooperation from city departments, many of whom I'd like to list because, which I won't, but you know, really a lot of work, police, inspections and standards, trash, DPW, everyone has been working on these problems and we just can't manage them. We don't have the resources. And when we do initiate core action or actually take some action, which takes a while to do, typically what happens is the developer either just takes care of the problem then, after we've been trying to enforce, enforce some sort of ordinance, and then just pays the fines and then just continues operating as they always have. And it's my thought that they probably have factored in the fines into their business model. They're certainly charging enough for rent to handle all these fines and just continue on with whatever they're doing, which is ignoring our ordinances. So currently the city has an ordinance that states the following, in R one and R one, R one A and R one districts, and you have maps in your packets, I think, that I submitted with the sub A, which will show you where those districts are. A single-family dwelling that is non-owner occupied shall not be occupied by more than three college students. And that's what we have on the books now. And we've had it on the books for a long time, as long as I've been in my seat since two thousand nineteen. The problem is that ordinance does not apply to the non-conforming residential dwellings in those districts. So people say, I don't understand, R one, R one A, there's supposed to be single families. Well, every, every district has a number of different kinds of dwellings, but this ordinance that we have currently only applies to single-family homes within those districts. And so what's happening is, there, there's only a small portion of properties that are protected. And so the developers are coming in and buying the multifamilies within those districts and just converting them into student dorms. So during the last session, and certainly before many of you were here, I did introduce an ordinance that would expand the ordinance to all dwelling types and all zoning districts. That would have impacted tens of thousands of dwellings. There was certainly a lot of opposition at that public hearing, and I listened very carefully. And I think one of the most compelling arguments I heard against that particular version of the ordinance was that it would displace a number of students. And so if you displace them from their overoccupied situations into the rest of our city, it certainly would exacerbate the problem we have with a lack of housing stock. And so what I am proposing today is a, I'm amending the ordinance to narrow it significantly, just to close the loophole on non-conforming homes in R one and R one A. I also have changed the definition of student to be undergraduate students, recognizing the fact that we have graduate students, certainly that are not the problem. These really are undergraduate students. So what I have before you today is an ordinance that only applies to non-owner occupied residential dwellings in R one and R one A, and only prohibits more than three undergraduate students from occupying the dwelling. So with this ordinance, I have the, it impacts not tens of thousands of dwelling units. It actually only impacts eighteen hundred dwelling units throughout the city. And even then, not all of those are overoccupied. So the number would even be smaller. This ordinance is not anti-housing. It's actually the opposite. We must strive to be a city where families can thrive and preserve housing for our residents. We need to encourage colleges and universities to do their share to house their students and not encourage our limited housing stock to be converted for profit centers for neglectful developers. So you're going to hear testimony from a lot of the neighbors that are suffering right now. But I really do ask for your support of this ordinance, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Mr. Bob Azar from the CPC, if you'd like to come up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Azar. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Planning and Development. So this, uh, the City Plan Commission has weighed in on the, um, the ordinance as it was originally presented. They made their recommendation back in July fifth of two thousand twenty-two. As I stated in the, um, record of the last hearing, the CPC recommended that the amendment be approved. They did have a couple of conditions of note, mostly relating to, um, the, uh, changes in section nineteen ten for institutional master plan, development plan review. There's nothing about this sub A that's different from the original ordinance as it pertains to section nineteen ten. So I would say that these conditions that the CPC wanted to see would still apply to this sub A. One is that institutions shall provide a list of properties occupied by students with the number of students residing in each address. The list shall be transmitted to the CPC and councilperson of the boards where the institution is located. Next, the number of students living off campus shall be broken down by year. Next, institutional master plan shall include the institution's policies, procedures, and fees charged for students to avail of off-campus living. And finally, an impact statement on the effect of students dispersing to different residents when the ordinance goes into effect. And that's all I have for you.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll now open up for public comments. City Sergeant, please, could you bring me the list of the proponents? All right, the first person that I have here is Chris Tompkins. Pardon me if I mispronounce your name. Good afternoon, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christopher Tompkins. I live at one ninety-eight Hope Street in Providence. I'm a proud resident of the city of Providence for twenty-four years, unlike many of the people who are going to speak in opposition to this ordinance tonight.
Chris, let me just add, I'm giving you two minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to start off with the bad news. Exhibit A. September ninth, two thousand twenty-two, The Washington Post published an article states with the worst brain drain.
Chris, could you, excuse me one second. Let me just enter this into the record.
Yes, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion to enter this as exhibit two into the record.
So moved. Second.
What should it say? It's made a second, all in favor, aye? Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Go right ahead, Chris.
Unfortunately, Rhode Island was ranked forty-seventh worst state. What does that mean? That means out of, there are forty-six other states that are higher than Rhode Island where the college graduates stay within the state. Rhode Island fortunately beat West Virginia and Vermont. So all the students that reside in Rhode Island under an enrollment contract with their respective institution, they arrive here under an enrollment contract, and in four years, they leave. They, unfortunately, they are transients. That's not their fault. That's not the state's fault, and that's not the city's fault. But they are not permanent residents of the city of Providence. They're going to move the city forward. They're transients. They're going to Boston. They're going to New York. They're going to California. They're going to Texas, where we wish them well. But they are not, they are in a transient condition at the city of Providence as their host city. So the choice tonight is, do you want to prioritize nurses, teachers, city employees that are looking for an apartment or a house, or an entrepreneur that wants to move to the city and grow a business and a family? Or do you want to prioritize transient students that are here for a set number of years and then leave? My vote would be to prioritize the nurses, the teachers, the city employees, the entrepreneurs that are trying to build a city and move it forward. And that is really the only issue that matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Dexter Strong.
Dexter Strong. Yeah, I live at eighty-nine Keene Street, and I have a short PowerPoint deck that I'd like to hand out. If you could give me a minute to pass this around. Sure, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to enter this exhibit number three into the record.
So moved. Second.
What should it say? It's made a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? You guys have it? Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. So I'm, I'm here to talk about our neighborhood. I've worked with several of my neighbors to put this presentation together, and we have a few maps and things we'd like to review with you. Uh, but we're focusing on the Lower Barnes, Keene, and Lloyd neighborhood between Thayer and Brown. And the first thing I want to discuss or show is the, the specific single-family homes that have been converted to high-density student rentals in the last two years.
Ah, this will all be done within two minutes, right?
Yes, I'm going to go fast.
Thanks.
And then we're going to show all student rentals in the neighborhood. And, and then Helen asked us to talk about the lived experience. Okay, what, what it's like living in this neighborhood? Okay, so if we go to slide number three, um, this is an aerial picture from Google of our neighborhood. You can see that there are three houses in our neighborhood that have been converted from single-family occupancy or office to high-density student housing in the last two years. So the first one is seventy-seven, seventy-nine Keene. Previously, this was a Brown professor and his wife. Uh, currently it's twelve students from the women's lacrosse and basketball team. Uh, the second house is eighty-three, eighty-five Keene. This was a family that raised their two daughters in the neighborhood. Their daughters went off to college, so they decided to move. It is now holding twelve students, uh, which is the men's sailing team and some other, it's mixed. It's not all sports team. It's partially a sports team. And then the third one is one fifty Lloyd, which, um, most recently was an office, and then it was abandoned for a period of time. And prior to that, it was a single-family resident. Residents that has eight students, uh, seven of which I believe are from the men's rugby team. So this is an increase of thirty-two students into our neighborhood uh, within the last two years. So let's go to the next slide, slide four. Uh, this shows that, uh, there are approximately fifteen houses that rent to students, uh, in our neighborhood area. The neighborhood was already a mix of single-family and multifamily, uh, houses, and, and several of them have actually flip-flopped over the years. And I think, believe these are the non-conforming ones uh, that were multifamily at one point, uh, but more, more recently were single-family. And the majority of the multifamily rentals are student housing. And there is a small house on Clark Lane that is in the, we believe is in the process of being remodeled and converted to student housing. That's the, the yellow arrow. If we move on to slide five, um, if we take away the trees in the map view, you can see that the houses in the neighborhood are very close together. And the houses on And the houses on Keene Street all have a backyard with a patio or a deck. And since the drinking age is twenty-one, and there's no place for undergraduates to go to drink, they can't go to bars, there's no place on the Brown campus, these backyards provide an ideal place for them to congregate and drink. So seventy-seven, seventy-nine Keene and eighty-three, eighty-five Keene share a common driveway. So it actually is, there's twelve students in each, so it's really a unit of twenty-four. Yes.
Sorry about that. We'll give another thirty seconds.
No, thirty seconds, okay. So my point is, sound travels in all directions from the backyard activities. Slide six is just reminding us that this is an R-one residential zone. It's a city map. Slide seven gets to the lived experience. So we've been in the neighborhood for eleven years. In the first ten years, we had less than five incidents. In the most recent year, we've had twenty-six incidents reported to Brown Student Conduct. Eighty-five percent of those involve three houses. You can see from the charts the different types. Between April first and April fifteenth, this is just from my house, I reported eleven incidents, and I was awoken from my sleep three nights in a row. And Brown Student Conduct, Brown Police and Providence Police have been very responsive. But it's, this is a reactive process, okay? It does not address the root cause. It's very reactive. Moving to slide eight, we were able to obtain from Providence Police the number of calls that have come in, total calls. So as we can see, between eighty-three, eighty-five, and seventy-seven, seventy-nine, there's been eighty-one calls to the police about these two houses. And if we go to my final slide, what we're asking for is please close the loophole that allows an unlimited number of unrelated tenants in non-owner-occupied, non-conforming houses in R-one residential neighborhoods. It does not make sense to restrict the number of occupants for single-family and then have absolutely no restriction, no limit on the non-conforming. We believe that College Hill is one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in any city in the U.S. I would put it up against Boston or Charleston or any other historic city. It is a reason why people visit Providence and want to live here. So we need help from the city to address the root causes and maintain the balance that makes this a beautiful community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Well put together. Thank you. Nina Markov. Marcos.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm going to read fast. Can you state your name for the record? I'm sorry, Nina Markov, seventy-six Keene Street. We have no problem with students living in apartments in the neighborhood, and in fact, we welcome that. The problem arises when developers seek out family homes with the express purpose of turning them into densely occupied private dorms. Because there's literally no occupancy limit, investors pack these homes with students, twelve, fifteen, or more in a family home, all to generate more rent. When you suddenly have a cluster of such houses with fifty or more undergrads living in them unsupervised, that's when some serious problems arise. The near constant noise, frequent parties, overflowing garbage, neglected maintenance, et cetera, all begin to have a real impact on the quality of life for all residents in the neighborhood. At the last hearing, students rallied by investors testified that they can't afford to share with fewer than three others. But the students may not realize that these investors are charging them rents that are far above market value. For example, those twenty-four students packed into the two six-bedroom family homes across the street in those houses, each student is paying something like fourteen hundred dollars rent. I don't know, you know, I can't confirm the exact number, which generates something in the order of seventeen thousand dollars a month per house. That, this, as I said, is above market value on College Hill, far above market value, and far more than any family could pay or would pay. In fact, this pair of investor-owned houses were initially rented to several families. But these families were soon pushed out because mini-dorms generate much higher rents. Gradually, over the years, the number of tenants in these houses has increased, as has the rent. The truth is that these investor-owned homes packed with undergrads not only affect residents' quality of life, but also drive up prices for everybody. I also want to address the claim that the ordinance won't work. Evidence in the neighborhood shows the ordinance does work. Student housing investors target only the non-conforming houses, that is, those not covered by the ordinance that don't have an occupancy limit. There's no doubt that if we didn't have the existing ordinance that covers single-family houses, we would have even more homes converted to investor-owned student housing. Some also argue that the ordinance would spread students out. But at least on the east side, the new Brown dorms and the student apartment building developers and the student apartment buildings that developers are constructing in the Thayer Street area will absorb the small number of students who may be displaced from the R-one neighborhood. Today's narrower version of student housing ordinance, which would simply close the loophole in the current ordinance, is a good compromise. It would not prevent students from living in the neighborhood. It would simply put a reasonable cap on student occupancy in these investor-owned houses and deter the proliferation of these private dorms in our residential neighborhood. It would go a long way toward making our neighborhood more livable for all residents. I urge you to please pass this modest expansion of the student housing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Yes, I have Snyder from ninety Keene Street. Apologize for not be able to make your first name.
First name is Franklin Schetter. S C H in the I D E R. Thank you for allowing me to speak and my neighbors to speak.
Absolutely.
I live at ninety Keene Street, across, down the street from Nina and across the street from Dexter. We've lived in the area six years. I've been in Providence twenty-six years. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and people have said the concerns we share are ones of the environment and the impact that the increasing density has. For example, the noise, I mean, I my school-aged children, they get woken up in the middle of the night. Our neighbors have school-aged children. The parking, the congestion, driving down the street quickly, it poses a safety hazard for my children who play in the street and our neighbor's children as well. And also just the trash and other things, just the general environment. You know, we all love our neighborhood, want to take care of it. We value the diversity of our neighbors who are in there. But we just want everyone to sort of have common care and common appreciation for the neighborhood. And when the ordinance is not played by, it leads to increased density and some of the challenges that we are talking about. So thank you for your audience.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Ann Metcalf. As you can see, we have a full house tonight, and I really would like everybody to have an opportunity to speak. So let's try to keep the comments for under two minutes, please.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ann.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Ann Metcalf, and I live at one hundred Lloyd. We moved there in nineteen ninety-one, so I'm an old neighbor, if you want to call me that. I remember when we moved in, our neighbors had children. Single people lived there and older couples. We were known as the baby block. And for example, on Halloween in October, we welcomed over two hundred trick-or-treaters. So it was a family block, which was a lot of fun. We all knew each other, enjoyed the camaraderie, and had and still have block events and dinners. My families, many families have lived there over thirty years. More importantly, our children had friends who played in our backyards and street hockey and driveways. And the foremost point I want to make is we trusted our neighbors because we knew them long-term, and that's very, very important for a family. So developers now are converting homes into mini-dorms. The character of these streets have changed, and students are very transient, as we all know. Here is an example of what it was like living with students next door. A high-powered Brown grad L.A. lawyer bought a home for his sophomore daughter and seven students. For three years, each summer, the owner subleased to other renters. It took years for the city inspectors to actually come by to check our complaints. By graduation, the L.A. family had sold the home. Very transient. So we had noisy, over-the-top weekend parties, strewn red cups, which we had to pick up, and kids coming and going all the time. It was impossible to introduce myself and to create a semblance of a relationship with anybody. So I'd like to support family neighborhoods that create stability and interest in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and I support Helen Anthony's ordinance. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Robert Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Good evening.
Robert Taylor. I live at one thirty Lloyd Avenue, which is in the same general neighborhood that a lot of the testimony has been about tonight. I lived there for over twenty years. I raised four kids there, including three college kids, so I'm familiar with college kids. College kids are great in a lot of ways. We love them. They're a great addition to the neighborhood. But let me explain the process with these houses. Overnight, a home that has been a single-family home for decades sold. The after the closing, a second house number goes on the front. And thereafter, it's a multifamily that's not subject to the R-one zoning. And as has been explained many times already tonight, that's resulted in ten students, maybe even more, in one formerly single-family home. I personally believe that these students, they have moved into the neighborhood because they like the neighborhood. They enjoy being in a quiet residential neighborhood. But college students have other things that they want to get done and want to do. And that includes, unfortunately, in many cases, parties outside in the yards and some of the other consequences that we've heard about tonight. So I urge this committee to consider an ordinance that does close the loophole. There is clearly a loophole where you can have a home that has been a single-family home, as I said, for decades. And it's sold. Somebody by putting a second house number on the front then can say, I'm exempt from the ordinance. And you get ten young people living in neighborhood. It's very, very disruptive. It's very disruptive for the existing neighbors, many of whom have been there for a long time. And I believe it's really not good for the students themselves, because I think it creates this conflict because you have a use that is not consistent with the neighborhood traditional use. So we're really just asking this committee to think about ways to help make the use of these homes consistent with the existing residential character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Rick Champagne.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rick Champagne. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the ordinance committee, for this opportunity. My first home purchase was a multifamily dwelling in Elmhurst. As student density increased around Providence College, so did the noise, party, and disruptions. The exponential growth of off-campus housing obliterated an entire neighborhood where families had lived for generations. It no longer offered a reasonable quality of life that residents seek in the city. I now reside in College Hill in an old multifamily dwelling. I ask, will this committee allow the same fate to occur in another neighborhood in this city? I fully understand that there may be nothing in this ordinance to benefit your individual wards. I also understand that you may see this as an east-side issue. As we did last time, we will hear a good deal about the housing crisis and affordability, which is not unique to our city. Some will argue that closing this loophole will further exacerbate the situation. I would argue having homes that garner twenty thousand dollars a month in rent are one of the causes of the affordable housing crisis. If a developer can purchase a non-conforming house, pack it with students, and make twenty thousand dollars a month, why wouldn't they? However, this practice of buying non-conforming homes displaces families from owning a home and renting, as they could not afford twenty thousand dollars a month in rent. When families or renters cannot find affordable housing on the east side, they seek housing in other parts of our city to reside in other neighborhoods like Elmhurst or the west side, then maybe your ward is next. This entire domino effect in turn displaces your constituents as well. Your wards are already feeling the effects of this behavior with rising prices, rents, and home values. The reality is, this is an issue for the entire city and not just the east side. I would ask that you imagine the house next to you is bought and turned into a mini dorm. Imagine the noise, the parties, the trash, students urinating on lawns right next to your home. How long would you tolerate that? At the last hearing, we heard from lots of students. It was really refreshing to see that so many taking part in city affairs. What may not have been obvious, but fairly common knowledge on college campuses is that many students were paid to testify that evening. The payment, in most cases, weren't excessive, what many of our city's working-class families make over the course of a couple of days. Lastly, as a core matter, will you allow the city to be overrun by developers who simply focus on what's in it for them? Or will this committee unite with the long-term residents of the city to give us the quality of life we all deserve? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Perry. Good evening, Linda.
Hello, and my name is Linda Perry, and I live in Washington Park, oh-two-nine-oh-five, Ward ten. Washington Park is a unique neighborhood, as is everyone's. And I can only speak for my neighborhood because I've lived there for forty-five years. As a person who owned multiple families, an investor who has rented ten apartments for forty years, so I have a little experience. And the two times I rented to students, I regretted it. There was physical damage to the house. So now I rent to graduate students only, and I'm down to one property. Therefore, I can only speak, like I said, to Washington Park. On my half-block alone, there are nine boarding houses where they jam in students. This has been an ongoing issue that I have communicated with the city over and over and over again. Illegal basement apartments, jamming them in. One house has eight residents, a two-bedroom bungalow that has been chopped up. This happens all over Washington Park. I have communicated with Johnson and Wales. And I think honestly, the colleges have something, have some responsibility here. They are not stepping up to the plate and providing more dorm space. And ten years ago, I had a conversation with the vice president at Johnson and Wales, because the school buses couldn't get through the intersections, and it was a big problem. There were cars everywhere on both sides of the street, and a school bus could not navigate through. So that got attention. We had a meeting with Johnson and Wales, and I said, you know, you have too many students here. She said, well, they all want to live downtown, but I said, they're not living downtown. They're living in Washington Park. They're jamming six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a head. And these boarding houses are commercial entities. They are not residential properties. And we all know our residential property tax is going up. And people like me and other people who have modest dwellings and don't jam everybody in. We can't afford, we can't afford, you know, a raise. So, but the investor who's chopped up their home and has like ten people paying eight hundred a pop every month, they can, they don't care, honestly. So I live with that day in and day out in my neighborhood alone, and I'm a microcosm for what's going on in the city. There's multiply that times our fourteen neighborhoods that we have in Providence. Several years ago, PC said, everybody's going to live on campus unless you're a senior. And so what do they do? They divest there and they move into Washington Park. We have a huge problem and it's not getting any better. And I think that our zoning department and our planning department needs to step up and err on the side of the residents. And if it wasn't for all the boarding houses, I believe, in my neighborhood, our little elementary school would still be open because families would be living in the neighborhood. Families are displaced, have been systematically over the years. So, you know, ching-ching, people are coming in. And I don't think it's the fault of the students. I think it's the fault of the universities and for our, us, the city, who has kind of been asleep at the wheel and let this evolve to the point where it's a crisis. Couple that with, you know, the housing crisis, again, asleep at the wheel for the past 10 years. We are in a, well, in an obvious mess. So for a change, for communication with the universities and, and I'm also for people that need a place to live. Wherever, whoever they are, whether they're a young professional, a family, a student, a person like me, you know, we all need a place to live. But the investors are, are taking over and creating a high market, an inflated market. We all know that. And it's at a critical point where something's going to change. So I, I don't have an answer. It's just my statement to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Sarah Baker? Barker. Apologize if I, you know.
Not a problem. You and many others. Yes, my name is Sarah Barker, also known as Sally. I live at 110 Lloyd Avenue. And one corner of our property abuts one of the most egregious offenders. A property that had been a single-family dwelling until a couple of years ago when it was sold. Currently, there's about 15 students in that five-bedroom, single-family house. Obviously, I'm here to strongly support the proposed ordinance. I taught at RISD for over 25 years. I love students and I'm sure I'd like, you know, each and every one of these students in these houses, if I were to meet them and speak with them individually. But when they are partying, or even if there's just six or seven of them in the backyard out there on a, on a sunny afternoon and the music comes out and they get louder and louder, they become very rude and inconsiderate. I can stand up on a chair and wave my arms and try to speak to them. Nothing. And if I do get through, as I said, they are rude and inconsiderate. Often, the, I have bought a decibel meter, or not bought, I downloaded on my phone a decibel meter. And so I have recorded it that during the parties, it can be anywhere from 50 to 80 decibels inside in my kitchen with an average of about 70. This will go on for hours. These days, I find I just have to leave when this goes on. So it also becomes impossible for us to use our yard for, well, for anything at that point. So there are two houses there now, the one that I mentioned that is abuts ours and then another one that are next to each other. They both have 15 students packed into what had been five-bedroom, single-family houses, both of them recently, recently bought and converted. And so you get, you get 30 people there regularly on a basis. And of course, parties are over 50 and a lot of beer pong, a lot of whooping. The landlord is not very good about the trash and rats have multiplied. And now I regularly see rats in my yard. So this current practice of, really of creating these mini dorms really only benefits the investors. And it's, it is driving up the, the prices for everyone, you know, making it hard for single families to compete buying these houses because the annual income for these houses can exceed $150,000. So it's very easy for the landlords to outbid, bid, single families here. And if the, if this ordinance were passed, it would honestly cost the students less money. Currently, it costs the students more money than living in a Brown dorm would. And they're really paying a premium for living in this mini dorm near campus. I'd like to underscore the previous speaker who indicated that it's the fault of the universities for really not dealing with their housing issues, increasing the number of students without dealing with the dorms. My husband, who taught at Brown for 13 years, has gone to Brown to try to talk to them about it. And while he, he knows people there, he knows the history. We have lived here for over, over 25 years. Let's just say it was a cool reception. So I do hope that you will, you will pass this and, and try to see if we can't get neighborhoods for livable again for, for single families and not drive them out. Thank you.
You're welcome, Sarah. Thanks. City Sergeant, could you please bring me the signing sheets? All right, so we have about 30 people that have signed up to speak. So could we please keep it to under two minutes so we can all have an opportunity? All right, so the first here is John Gallagher, Esquire. John Garry here, how could I mistake in your name? Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. John Garry here, attorney for Walter Brown Hart. With respect to this matter, we speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. Mr. Chairman, although the proposed ordinance is certainly more limited than the prior draft of the ordinance, we believe it still serves no legitimate purpose. There is no evidence of a correlation between the number of students in a dwelling and disruptive behavior. Rather, disruptive behavior is more a function of social media invitation to a party than the number of people living in a dwelling. This ordinance will do nothing to solve that problem. Further, the ordinance will worsen the already severe housing crisis in the city, not only for students but for all persons looking for housing. Why would the council make the housing crisis worse as a matter of civic policy without a real benefit in return? And I would suggest to you that there is illusory benefit here, which is not real. There will be no benefit as a result of this ordinance with respect to the disruptive conduct. If there is any, it's not as a result of the number of students living in a dwelling unit. Finally, the ordinance penalizes property owners who have made a substantial investment in the city of Providence and pay significant property taxes. The ordinance confiscates a portion of the investment for no legitimate purposes. It is fundamentally unfair. We would, we would ask that you not recommend approval of the ordinance to the full council, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. David Shetner? Good evening, David.
My name is David Schaefer. I'm a partner of Samson Realty. I know about the rental market. I know about all these problems. And the first thing I have to tell you is that the ordinance will fall flat when it's appealed. There's absolutely no chance that a student referendum like this, a student ordinance like this, is going to survive the first court of appeals. I can tell you that right now, as we speak, right now, as I stand here, the constitutionalists in Boston are watching what this committee is doing and are making the decision if they're going to jump in. So between the constitutionalist attorneys in Boston, the ones in Cambridge, the ones at Harvard, the ones that are watching right now as we speak, they're going to be making the decision. And there's absolutely no chance, even if it survives the Supreme Court of Rhode Island, there's no chance that it's going to survive the first court of appeals. There's a better way to approach this. The better way is, we need to start from scratch about our good neighbor policy. We need to rewrite it. We need to talk to the police. We need to just start from the beginning. I also want to let you know that I represent hundreds of landlords that have contacted me. If this ordinance gets passed, each and every one of them is going to sue the city to get reevaluated. The, the prices of the evaluations have gone up and up and up commensurate with the rents. And I'm talking mostly for the multifamilies, not for the single families that have been converted. As soon as you bring this down, you take somebody with a rent roll of four or five students and you bring it down to three, the property values are going to crash. And as soon as those property values go down, the reevaluation has to happen. It's going across the city, million dollars, $2 million in taxes when this happens. And they're all going to be suing for reevaluations. And you're not going to be able to fix it with a property tax adjustment because you're tying in the single families and the owner occupies, so it's impossible. But there are better ways of handling this. You know, the crash and burn system is not going to work here. We burned down the house just to kill a couple rats. It's not going to work. Right now, I think it's a little disingenuous also for people to say, "We've lived on College Hill all these years." Yeah, it's College Hill. Let's talk about the fact that your single-family dwelling has tripled in value in the last 10, 12, 15 years because of students have come in. I mean, people are making a half a million dollars on their houses and the last, and the single-family houses in the Keene, Lloyd, Barnes area, they're making all this money on their properties by living in these neighborhoods with students. So when the time comes for them to cash out, I mean, we're talking huge amounts of money that they're making and it's because of this. But I, I do feel for the, my tenants, I don't have this problem. I don't get complaints. We get a complaint, we visit the property, we handle it. I've heard a lot about trash problems. You know, I've mentioned this a couple times. I emailed the mayor about this. The trash problem can be handled tonight. All you have to do is make available to the landlords that they can pay, cost, pay for additional barrels. Get that, within three days, you can get that together and solve the trash problem, which I've heard everybody here keeps saying, "Trash problem. We can solve that immediately." So what's the answer? The answer is this. We have to take these multifamilies and we have to give the owners opportunity to break some of them up. So which means that we have to look at zoning and we have to give some zoning relief. Not crash and burn the houses, not bring, you know, them down with three people in there. We give some zoning relief. Some of these six and seven-bedroom multifamilies, divide them up into two different apartments, split them up, some are professional, maybe one with students, bring it down. We need zoning relief. We get the zoning relief and we back off the historical society from some of their ridiculous mandates, then we could go ahead and start to bring down the density of the students in certain neighborhoods. But this is an industry. If, if you go ahead and do this, you're going to crash the real estate market. And what happens when one property gets reevaluated? The properties next to it are going to get reevaluated and you're going to crash the real estate market. It's an industry. And people are making their livelihood here at this industry and you can't do it. Well, what I would suggest is that you table it and ask the mayor or ask the, the director of real estate to come up with a plan to reevaluate the zoning, reevaluate the historical society requirements. And over the next several years, try to taper it down. Don't burn the house down. Let's taper it down.
Thank you, David. Jeff Levy?
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the committee. I'm here in two capacities today. I'm here as, to testify on behalf of the ACLU in opposition to this proposed ordinance. I'm also here in my personal capacity as a resident of College Hill. I will say first that, you know, I'll, I'll start with the ACLU issue. This ordinance would take rights away from college students who are citizens with all the rights of every other citizen of the city just because they're college students, just because they're pursuing a college degree. And we're very focused here today on Brown students because many of my neighbors have come to testify in favor of the ordinance. But this ordinance would affect college students all over the city, many of whom are not wealthy. And many of whom cannot afford to live in an apartment unless they share it with several other students. And so there's, there's no reason to address problems of noise, problems of parking, problems with litter by stripping rights away from members of our, our society. There are, there are better ways to address the problem that don't involve taking rights away. And as someone else testified ahead of me, I don't have any reason to believe that this ordinance would address the problems that my neighbors are concerned about. For instance, one of my neighbors testified about a, a house that was purchased by a wealthy Brown alum for his daughter. There are always going to be, first of all, that house would not have been affected by this ordinance because it was not, it was owner-occupied. Also, there's always going to be wealthy students at Brown whose parents are able to pay rent of higher than market rate. And that's what will happen. Those students will still continue to live in houses, multifamily houses on College Hill. They'll continue to have parties. And, and, and what, the people who will suffer will be college students of lesser means and people who aren't college students, the nurses, the, the, the teachers, the other people who are looking for rental housing in the city. There's another aspect of this ordinance that's troubling and that's the, the, we're not really talking about today. And that's the part at the end that talks about the city reporting to colleges when their college students violate ordinances, the college students, the colleges finding a mechanism to report back to the city. There are privacy issues raised by that part of the ordinance that, that the ACLU would have a real problem with. Finally, as I've lived on College Hill for 25 years. I live on Brown Street in between Lloyd and Keene. Most of the people who testified in favor of this ordinance are my neighbors. I liked them very much. They probably won't like me much after today, but I, I'll have to live with that. I, I respect their experiences, but I can tell you as a resident of College Hill for 25 years, we live on College Hill. It's a place where college students have always lived. I've never had a problem that I wouldn't expect. Has there been noise at times? Absolutely. Do people sometimes leave empty beer cans on my front steps on Saturday night? Absolutely. If I didn't want that, I would have lived in Barrington. I would have lived in East Greenwich. But 25 years ago, I chose to live in Providence, in the city of Providence, and raise my children in the city of Providence. And I love living on College Hill. And I, and I, I don't think that the college students are the problem with College Hill. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're here today because there's a problem on that block. Everybody here testifying lives within one block of me, that block of Lloyd and Keene. And I understand that there's an issue there. And I don't discount that, but I don't think that this ordinance is, is the way to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Greg Miller. Good evening, Greg.
I have my timer. Two minutes. Uh, thank you guys, uh, for hearing me. My name is Greg Miller. Um, I own my single family property at 108 Sunbury Street in Wantzcooke. Um, I bought my house three years ago and I lived there with, uh, my brother, his girlfriend, and my two best friends. Uh, due to, uh, medical emergency with my family, I moved out of my house, but still own it, and I moved to East Providence. Uh, so this ordinance directly affects whom I consider to be my family, uh, because everyone in my house is pursuing an undergraduate degree. You know, I think about the issues that the city faces and, uh, listening to everyone speak tonight. Uh, and I think everyone in this room can, room agrees on one thing, that something needs to change. Um, I just came back from Boston and there they had identified that one of the largest marginalized groups up there and who experienced the most poverty and who are some of the most homeless in the city are students. No one thinks about students experiencing extreme poverty or homelessness. And this ordinance would discriminate, discriminate them based on their occupation. And at a time in this country when many people, based on their sexuality, their beliefs and their occupation are facing extreme discrimination, um, I think we can do better than that. Providence for almost 400 years has been a place where people have come here to better themselves, to learn and to express personal and religious freedom. So when we look at solving these issues, um, I think we need to maintain a level of humility and understand that people, um, come here to better their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Michael Kearney.
And again, uh, thank you for the, for keeping under two minutes. Just want to have an opportunity for everybody to be heard.
Sure, yeah. Can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead.
Great. Uh, so my name is Michael Kearney. Uh, I live at 134 Deepes School Avenue. I am a Providence taxpayer of seven years. Um, I am a current undergraduate at Brown University and nobody is paying me to be here. I am here of my own accord. So, uh, I do want to say that I share a lot of the concerns that the proponents of this ordinance have raised tonight. Um, like more and more housing on the east side being taken up by students. Um, and how the growth of Brown has been displacing people on the east side, especially in Fox Point, um, and how the neighborhood has changed. Um, however, limiting the number of students who can live in an apartment will not just fail to solve these problems, it is going to make them worse. In, thanks. In, in my, uh, freshman year at Brown, I took Principles of Economics and the first thing we learned was about supply and demand, and that is exactly how the housing market works. If fewer college students can live in each unit, then there are fewer units of housing available for everybody. Fewer housing units mean, means housing prices will go up for everyone. This creates an incentive to convert even more houses to apartments and even more long-term residents will be displaced from the east side. You might think that some students are going to move back on campus if this passes, but that's not going to happen for two reasons. First of all, Brown simply does not have enough on-campus housing to house all of its students. They're already almost at capacity. Second, most students who I personally know who live off-campus do it because it's so much cheaper than living on-campus. Brown charges $16,598 a year for room and board. And so it is only cheaper to live on-campus when off-campus, when off-campus rents rise to $1,844 per month. And this ordinance will raise rents, but they're not going to raise them that much. Um, so it's also important to note that a lot of the units in the outer parts of the east side are three units or less. And so even with the amendments tonight, that means that we would be banning students from living exactly where we want them to be living, which is in the denser housing right around campus. One classmate I talked to was going to live with five of her friends by RISD next year. But because of this ordinance, they're now scrambling to line up a second option in case they can't live there. But so were all of the other students who are going to live off-campus at RISD. So now they're looking in Summit and Upper South Providence and in Smith Hill. Luckily, there are some things the council can do to fix this problem. The city could enforce the safety codes that are already on the books. As someone who's lived in many off-campus apartments, that would be great. Um, and the council could also discourage developers from converting existing housing by making it easier and less expensive to build new housing. To both address the housing prices and to stop the expansion of students into neighborhoods, I urge the council to, to allow for more housing instead of artificially restricting the supply of housing.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Michael Ziegler.
Uh, hi, yes. Uh, my name is, uh, Michael Ziegler. I live at, uh, 291 Williams Street.
Good evening. Please try to keep it under two minutes.
I will, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course. Um, I'm here, uh, in my capacity as the political director for the Graduate Labor Organization. Uh, we are the labor union representing, uh, over a thousand, uh, graduate workers at Brown University. Um, and I'm here, I spoke previously in opposition to the previous version of this. I do want to acknowledge, uh, that Councilor Anthony is putting forward a more modest version of this. Unfortunately, my concern is that this will, even if this affects only 1,800 units, uh, at most, this will continue to make it more difficult for all renters to find affordable housing in the city. Uh, and for that reason, our, uh, our union remains opposed to the proposal as currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Senator Sam Bell, please. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening. Thank you so much. And so here today, uh, what I'm asking for is for this ordinance to be amended, uh, to fully repeal the underlying student housing law. And I want to explain why full repeal is the only option. To begin with, I understand the intent of the proponents. Student housing disruption is very real. It is a legitimate problem. The problem is, this makes it worse. It's not a theoretical thing at this point. We have seen the impact. It has not been subtle. Since the underlying ordinance passed, we have seen a flood of student housing companies. Strive Realty has been particularly prominent in the area around PC. Have come in and flooded neighborhoods that did not see this before. It has not been subtle. And no, it has not reduced disruptions from partying. If anything, it has spread those disruptions into neighborhoods that did not previously have those disruptions. But the much more fundamental issue here relates to source of income discrimination. The committee is no doubt aware, we passed a law at the state level banning discrimination on the basis of source of income. And I want to say I sincerely appreciate sponsor and, uh, those on the council who have worked to make a key amendment that partially addresses this concern, which is the removal of graduate students, which is perhaps the area that is most patently on its face in violation of the source of income discrimination law. However, there's still a very serious problem with undergraduate students. Law is not clear. There is no case law at this point. But I think it's pretty clear. You couldn't pass a law saying it's illegal to rent to, to people or to discriminate against people on the basis of their parents paying for it on the basis of it being paid for by student loans. And to have something as similar to that as college students would be like, you know, instead of saying, oh, I don't want to accept alimony, saying I want to discriminate against anyone who's divorced. The legal argument the city would have to make to defend this would be the argument that you're able to come up with classes that are similar to source of income, but by it being a distinct class, that's allowable. And I want to emphasize to the city the danger and risk that could come, not just if this were to be struck down, but if it were to be upheld. What the city would be doing by upholding this ordinance is setting a precedent that would undermine, severely undermine a critical civil rights ordinance or statute. And that is why full repeal is the only option, because by having this on the books, the city risks the possibility of a judgment that could undermine that law. We understand the reality of the Rhode Island Supreme Court right now, which does have a majority of justices appointed by Republican governors, something that will soon change. We need to understand the danger that this law poses. Finally, I want to say I understand people are trying to do the right thing here. I really do. This council has already made critical strides and I really, really appreciate that. This is a difficult issue. It's a difficult problem. And I want to thank the people who are working hard, uh, to do their best to address this difficult issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Claudia from Evergreen Street.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman. Thank you. Uh, my name is Claudia Wack. I live at, oh, it's okay. No one ever gets it right. Uh, uh, my name is Claudia Wack. I live at 144 Evergreen Street. I am a resident of Ward Three. Um, and I actually don't live in a R1 or R1A zone, but as others have alluded, that doesn't mean that I wouldn't be affected by the ordinance that's proposed here tonight. Um, I'm sympathetic to the fact that clearly there are underlying issues here with, uh, lack of adequate student housing, maybe not enough, uh, noise enforcement. But the reality is that even if you cap the number of students that live in an apartment, those students are not going to vanish. They're simply going to be spread out more thinly among the apartments that are in the city. So doing a little back of the envelope math, for example, if you have forty students in ten apartments and we now need to decrease that to only thirty students, because only three per apartment, um, which, you know, based on some of the situations that folks have described here tonight, sounds like even a little bit of a lowball estimate if we're estimating only one student displaced per apartment. In that scenario, you need three extra apartments to house the same amount of students that you had before. So looking at this scaled back proposal, if we're talking about 1,900 dwellings, we need 600 new apartments online in these neighborhoods next academic year. Um, and like I said, that's even a little bit of a, a lowball estimate. So again, I'm, you know, clearly there are some, some issues here to be addressed, but I would really urge you to, um, consider that this is the wrong way to go about it. It's only going to exacerbate the housing crunch that already exists. Uh, I know I'm a Providence resident who my rent went up $650 a month this year. Um, and so I really don't look forward to the prospect of more competition for the same number of apartments. Um, instead of capping the number of students, how about we lift the cap on numbers of apartments so that we can have more housing for everyone and we don't have to fight over it quite so badly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Eugene Chapman. Eugene. Guess Eugene left. So, uh, Brian Bishop.
Uh, good evening, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, members of the, uh, the committee and, uh, everybody else here. Um, I think it's important that as a property owner and someone who's concerned about this type of change to the ordinance, that actually we give some recognition to the difference between the ordinance that's before you now and the ordinance that was before you in November. Um, I just think it deserves, it deserves note that the, that the proponents have tried to narrow their proposal and actually focus at least on what they think their real issue is. And I, I thought the last proposal was a wild kind of scattershot broadly at, 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 at almost any kind of dense or multifamily housing that could possibly have students and, uh, and perhaps uh, starting in that way is what has kind of garnered a great deal of attention a, a, and serious opposition to the proposal. So I just think it's important to recognize that there's been a change. That doesn't mean I support the ordinance this before you, but I want to recognize that people have, ha- have been trying to, uh, deal with the tough issue. If this was easy, we'd all be home, uh, watching Netflix. And, uh, but I also notice that, that the opponents, um, uh, you know, have not looked, I think, at, at what's, uh, or I'm not, but the proponents have not looked at some of the solutions that the opponents are suggesting. And that is, in particular, not spreading students further out, but gathering them in. And indeed, I may be mistaken, but I believe some of the same faces here proposing an ordinance preventing three students from living together have also opposed very dense student housing in RP zones and in commercial zones on Fair Street, which is the most, how could you possibly have a more appropriate place closer to the university to build dense housing than in these zones that are effectively designated for it? And yet you have people in the neighborhoods, neighborhood activists opposing these. You have them opposing Brown's dorms. I don't think you can have it both ways. I think that we do need, uh, we do need to look at, uh, the, the one neighborhood is an issue. I grew up in that neighborhood. I delivered the papers in that neighborhood. I've known that neighborhood my entire life. And there were students there, but I do agree. There's been, you know, there's kind of a creep into the middle of these blocks. I understand why people are concerned. But if this is really largely about one neighborhood, I'm not sure that changing the use of that zone throughout the entire city is an appropriate way, is an appropriate way to get to this. I don't know if we need a, a student overlay in that area to demonstrate the lines beyond which is not, this is not going to march. Uh, and, but we need, we need to come to the table and I, and I appreciate, uh, very much. I rent to students, but I'm unaffected by this because my properties are not in the, even when it was R2, R3, they're not in the affected zones. I mean, be in my greatest interest just to be quiet and my apartments would become worth more. But I don't believe that's the right way to go for the city, and I hope that you will work with the, uh, proponents as well as the opponents to come up with a, with a good solution here.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Owen Anderson.
Hey, can you hear me all right? All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Owen Anderson and I'm an undergraduate student at Brown University, here speaking in opposition to the proposed ordinance. So as a student, I can say with near certainty that the desire to go off-campus is not going anywhere. My university simply doesn't have the current infrastructure to house all of its students on campus. To provide an example, last semester, there were over 300 sophomores that didn't have housing originally. And then what did Brown do? They released more off-campus housing. Many of these students attempted to live on College Hill and did so successfully. Decreasing the number of students per house, as said previously, would not get rid of the issue. It would only proliferate it. I also took Principles of Economics. I know that when supply decreases but demand stays the same, prices will increase. And this would only put a burden on low-income students like myself. If these students are drinking and throwing parties at these residences, changing the number of students per house, again, wouldn't cause these things to cease. It would only spread them around more in the Providence community. There'd now be groups of four students. You'd break up the 12-person houses and said you scatter groups of four all across Providence. These people just send out invitations and These people just send out invitations and then there will be more disruption in these communities. Why burden both the students and the Providence community? Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Saunders.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Saunders and I'm a Brown University student and I'm here to spoke, speak in opposition of the proposed act. I would like to look at the financial impact that this act would have on students, particularly. Creating and how creating an occupancy limit would lower the amount of off-campus housing for students. Which would likely increase renting prices and place more of a financial burden on each student. Brown University has such a stark contrast in resources and incomes within kids coming from some of the wealthiest backgrounds. In the entire world. I've seen firsthand the resources that many of these students have. And I'm certain that a lot of them would have no problem continuing to rent off-campus despite the proposed ordinance. Many people have complained that larger houses come with noise complaints and partying. At Brown, where housing is almost a status symbol. The wealthier students will be happy to continue rent, continue to rent these larger houses and disregard the empty beds. And rooms that aren't used in order to stay in these houses. And to prove this, I'd like to point to the multiple students that I know who have bought, not rented, but bought houses for their four-year stay at Brown. Thus, not only would the noise problem remain unsolved, but this would leave lower-income students. And particularly minorities such as myself. To bear the burden of housing. As fellow students previously stated, Brown does not secure housing for all four years, nor do they have the resources to do so. Which will leave many students with no other option but to rent housing that they cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh. From 116 Waterman Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Yash Gwani. I live at 116 Waterman Street. And I come here today as a Brown student that shares a home with seven other Brown students as well. And I wanted to come and, and sort of just talk about. The experience that living with seven other individuals has had on my life. And. I think the proponents of this matter are hinging their entire argument on a small subset of college students. And are failing to recognize the unmeasurable benefits of these homes beyond congregations. Being able to interact and reside with many others who bring unique perspectives and experiences have allowed me to broaden my horizons in all aspects of my life. Limiting, limiting these units to three people deprives the average college student of the chance of being in an environment that cultivates knowledge and respect for everyone. Additionally, multi-bedroom units allow financially burdened. Individuals to alleviate their fiscal situations by allowing them to have the power to find and rent units in their price range. Many students from Brown come from low-income families who do not have the ability to live off-campus without having roommates to help pay for rent. It is much more affordable for students to have roommates and live together. This would financially harm countless students and many future students at Brown. And quite honestly, this housing ordinance is extremely targeted and racist. As it seems to want to keep financially burdened individuals and students of color out of. Residential neighborhoods. And I don't think that's, that's the future that problems seems, especially in a college town. Thank you.
Thank you. Passpot Schiffman.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Casper Schliemann and I'm a current student at Brown and I live at 150 Lloyd Street, which was mentioned. Previously, and I'm here to speak in opposite, opposition to the proposed ordinance, which will discriminate against low-income students. And compromise the safety of students. I believe my fellow peers have spoken adequately. To how the ordinance will discriminate against low-income students. Limiting the number of students who can live together is only going to be a detriment to these low-income students as high-income students. Will simply be able to pay the extra cost, still make noise for while. While pushing lower-income students farther and farther away from Brown in order to acquire housing, thus spreading the issue out. Living with multiple students is the only way many, many students can afford to live off-campus and not pay. The absorbent fees that schools like Brown cost, charge to live on campus. And furthermore, I want to briefly touch on the fact that by requiring students to list addresses and number of students living in a house. And providing that information to the school and thus to the city is a pretty big. Violation of privacy and I think it's safety and I personally would, would definitely not be comfortable in providing that information, which could endanger my safety. And I just want to say in conclusion that. I've loved my time in Providence and this is an amazing city, which is with such a diverse and vibrant student community. And I'm really saddened that. Ordinance like this would be proposed in order that is seeking to destroy the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sidhathir Kalala.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Siddhartha Kalala and I'm a junior at Brown University. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. So I want to start out by saying that I understand that this is an incredibly complex issue. And while I do empathize with our neighbors. If this ordinance passes, I see a lot of my classmates and friends being put in an incredibly difficult financial situation. A large majority of my classmates, around forty-five percent, receive financial aid in order to be attend our school. If this ordinance passes, it's the students who are on financial aid that take the fall. This is because less nearby housing opportunities naturally will create greater competition for these spaces. Forcing the students from low-income backgrounds to have to search for housing farther away. While their financially privileged peers can afford the spike in housing. That being said, I think the university is mainly at fault. Limited dorm capacity has led to the situation where students are scrambling to pick up scattered housing around Providence. But because the dorm capacity is the root of this problem, converting the nearby multiple-unit housing to single-use unit housing. Is a clear removal of housing opportunities for students. Ultimately, I think that as long as the dorm situation stays the same on campus. Passing this ordinance would be very detrimental to the Brown student population. A decision to pass this ordinance will hurt my immigrant and first-generation classmates the most. Since the financial aid they receive from Brown would no longer be able to cover their living expenses. And force them into a terrible financial situation that they previously would have been able to escape.
Thank you. Tim Launder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Launders and I'm a student at Brown University, here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. I want to begin by describing the life I had as a college student living on campus at Brown. The bathroom in my dorm my sophomore year had repeated pipe issues, which Brown facilities were very responsive to fixing. However, they could not fix the root cause of the problem and me and all of my roommates, all of our rooms flooded with bathroom water pretty badly. Stories like this are common at nearly all institutions, not just Brown. With the new ordinance, there will be much less student accommodation, which will make living off-campus much more expensive. Housing prices are skyrocketing, skyrocketing around the country, not just in Providence. This ordinance would not change that, only make rent increase as the number of students that can live in one place becomes incredibly limited. Students will spread out from College Hill in response, exacerbating the current problems. And students will continue to live where they already do. I am on financial aid at Brown and as a physics concentrator focused on applying to PhD programs next semester. I could never make enough money over the summer to cover off-campus. To cover living off-campus with the proposed ordinance. My roommates currently can afford to pay more to cover, to cover rent and live in the larger rooms, which allows me to live with them. I beg you to not take this opportunity away from the thousands of students like me. With the new ordinance, people in my position who, to remind you, as. Sid said earlier, make up forty-four percent of Brown's population. Would be priced out of living with a diverse group of friends and without fear of their rooms being flooded by bathroom water. Parties would not stop. Noise would not stop. The problems described today will not stop. People like me would just be excluded from having the opportunity to live off-campus. We are not just students. We are people and we are citizens and we are Providence taxpayers. And I implore you to remember that as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Smagula.
Good evening. Hello. I'm here to show support for my neighbors.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm Stefan Smagula. I live on Keen. Stephen Too King. I'm here tonight to show support for my neighbors, some of whom you've heard from tonight. They're deeply affected by this problem. And I'm here to support Councilwoman Helen Anthony's proposal. I think we've heard a lot of quantitative data, the number of phone calls to the police, the number of reports to Brown University. The number of times someone has been awakened in the middle of the night by parties, by yelling, by shouting. I wanted to share a slightly different perspective with you tonight. I'm here. Because we recently moved to Providence and shortly after moving in. I heard a noise coming from the front yard. I, it was at night, maybe around 10:00 PM. I walked to the front of the house. I looked out the front door window. And what I saw was like a scene out of Animal House. The movie about a fraternity gone, you know, gone crazy. This was not funny, though. It wasn't funny. What I saw made me call the police. There were a group, there was a group of about twelve to fifteen young women and young men. Standing in a circle, chugging from a hard, a bottle, a jug of hard liquor. And they were singing a song and each person had to chug until the verse was done. What I saw is, I thought, this is a recipe for disaster. This is underage drinking and alcohol poisoning and maybe worse. So I called the police and that's why I'm here tonight. I don't think it's good for the students either. To live in de facto fraternities where there's no supervision. So that's, I'd like you to consider that as well.
Thank you. Justin Kins.
Dustin Kearns. I agree with all of. The testimonies that oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Kay.
Good evening. Good evening. I don't have much to add, you know, everyone said most of it, just. This is kind of a neighborhood issue with, it seems like two properties, you know, it's many of the same neighbors who come to all of these meetings, you know, with the, the trash and whatnot. But there are new developments, you know, Helen Anthony herself opposed a fifth story, adding ten new, ten new students to a development in the C2 Zone. I don't know how she can sit here, propose an ordinance to reduce the housing stock while also trying to limit any new developments, you know. Where are these students supposed to live? Where are just regular people supposed to live? You know, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's all I would like to add.
Thank you for your comment. Martha. Or the Mars. Sixty-nine Grove Street. I apologize. It's. Do I have a Mars? It doesn't appear to be, so. Hudson Hayo. Mr. Hudson left. How about Noah from eighty-five Longdon Street? Christian Roseland. Thank you, members of the ordinance committee.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Christian Roseland. I live at eight forty-two Hope Street. I, like sixty percent of Providence residents, am a renter. I make a decent income and I would like to own a home. However, the price continues to escalate out of reach. I'm here to strongly oppose the proposed ordinance. I understand that it has been reduced in scope since the previous ordinance, but the whole thing is frankly a bad idea. This ordinance. Will make the housing crisis worse. It will displace students and this will increase rents. This is, as many people have noted tonight, this is simple supply and demand. We make no mistake, we are in a severe housing crisis. The median rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Providence is twenty-three hundred dollars per month. The median income for a family in Providence is fifty-six thousand dollars a year. Median rent is forty-nine percent of the median income. I've heard a lot of arguments tonight, really some quite amazing arguments from affluent white homeowners. Who moved to neighborhoods named things like College Hill. Bought homes, profited from hundreds of thousands of dollars in equity gain. And now are objecting to students. I find these arguments to be incredibly insensitive to the lived experience of other people, such as the people. Who are currently paying half of their income in rent. I also find them incredibly insensitive to the issue of homelessness, which is on the rise in Providence. Because just like so many other cities around the nation. Rents continue to rise out of the reach of many of our residents and twenty-one point five percent of Providence residents are in poverty. I've had my own experiences with noisy neighbors, but I think we have bigger concerns as a city. I would like to urge the entire city council to act to do something proactive and positive about the housing crisis. We desperately need to build more units. So, please pardon my phone. I would like to urge you to take steps to build more housing, to address this crisis. So that we can reduce the rent burden on so many of our, our residents. And to not take steps that will actively make this crisis worse. Such as the proposed ordinance that you've heard tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Schelling.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Schelling. I live on Lloyd Avenue, just here where we're loving to talk about tonight. I'm thirty years old. My wife and I rent an apartment on Lloyd Avenue and. We, and I, I would like to say that I share the legal and ethical concerns about targeting a subgroup of citizens. Where nonetheless their only offense is trying to pursue an education. That seems very concerning to me and I would like to support the, that those arguments made earlier. However, additionally, my primary concern is to the broader affordability crisis. Providence rents rose for me, rose for median two-bedroom apartments by twenty-three percent in the past year. Which is the fifth highest out of any city in the US and it's the fastest out of any city not in the Sunbelt. I recognize that this proposed ordinance has been narrowed, however. We have to recognize how we get to these affordability crises is by, you know, a thousand small cuts. And. Each thing that happens that does reduce available housing units, puts stress on my, my property that I rent. And all the other units in the, in the city. And while I, I understand the inclination to believe that it's small. But as was mentioned that, you know, just two months ago, I was at a planning commission meeting. About a development on Waterman Street, I think it was 116 Waterman. It's like literally one block off of Thayer Street. And there are a lot of very similar concerns that successfully reduced the scope of that project. Removed a floor off of that building. I think it removed, you know, two to four apartments out of there. And I'm, the reality is that that's actually typical. And so it's like, you know, in that situation, everybody is saying, hey, look, it doesn't really matter. We're just removing a few apartments. In this situation, people are saying, hey, look, it doesn't really matter. But ultimately, to fight an affordability crisis, it requires constant vigilance. And so I encourage you. To understand the, the crisis that we're in and to focus on that and to not allow excuses. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Surya Catree.
Hello.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. My name is Surya. I'm a resident of one sixteen Waterman Street and a student at Brown. Thank you for hosting this and it's really educating to learn about all the different experiences that everyone's been having. And this is my like first city hall, so it's a cool experience for me.
Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. So to start, I think, you know, many of the stories that I've, I've heard have held ethos and I understand that living in a neighborhood for many years, one is subject to feel attached to the fond memories, connotations and situations. However, although I cannot attest to the varying experiences of others, I can attest to mine. And I believe with any law or proposal, the net gain and benefit should be considered. With more students coming into College Hill, their perspective should be accounted for. Living in a group of eight has allowed me to cherish experiences with my roommates that otherwise I would be split up from and have been. It has allowed me to learn more about myself, learn from my roommates, live next to the library, next to places to eat, proceed with religious activities and gain the intangible experiences of what it is like to live in a house as a tenant. Sitting here, I've heard about how communities have been fragmented and the reason improperly directed towards students. However, from my perspective as a current student, I can attest that if anything, community has arose. The solution to fragmented communities shouldn't be to further fragment them into smaller units, but rather foster and sustain those relationships with living situations that can satisfy the most residents of College Hill. As a house divided cannot stand alone, nor can a community. And fragmenting these communities, I believe, is not the solution to bettering them, but rather fragmenting them even further. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, from one sixteen Waterman Street, Gaurav. I, I, I don't know, I'm sure I didn't get it right.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gaurav Rattor and I'm and I'm also a resident of one sixteen Waterman Street. I wanted to share a personal anecdote from one of my closest friends at Brown. He's a low-income student on a full scholarship from the university. And this last summer, he stayed in Providence on John Street, working an unpaid research position at a lab and he was living with five other students since he was unable to afford housing closer to Brown's campus. He had to commute nearly twenty minutes each day, which was already an obstacle due to his busy schedule. But with this policy enacted, he would have been forced to live even further while paying potentially higher rent. This story is shared by countless low-income Brown students who are significantly disadvantaged by this policy. This policy change further serves to gentrify Providence, increase rent for college students and overall not solve the problem at hand of reducing noise disturbances. This change will not prevent college students from partying and causing noise disruptions. If anything, forcing students to spread further into Providence and gentrify the city will achieve the opposite effect as students will affect more neighborhoods in the city. It's clear that other solutions are needed to control trash, waste, noise levels and other neighborhood disturbances in Providence. But this ordinance change will only cause more problems than it solves. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliana Marulo. Okay, so Noah Collingman.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Noah Glickman. I am a resident at sixty-six John Street. I'm an undergrad at the university at Brown and I am the president of the Brown ACLU chapter. I'm going to defer to the professional ACLU member Jeff, who was here earlier to talk more eloquently about students' rights and the penalizing of poverty that this ordinance does. And I'm here to talk about another element of constitutional practice that this ordinance implicates. And that is the overbroad drawing of laws that sweep up more than they intend. Historically, that has been one of the found, one of the foundational principles under which the Supreme Court, the federal Supreme Court, I can't speak to the round Supreme Court, will invalidate statutes. And this case, this ordinance does just exactly that. We're talking about, and proponents of the bill said this very clearly, two blocks, specifically three houses, I think they said, eighty-five percent of the calls were about two houses, seventy police calls were about one house. We're having a second city hall hearing about three houses on College Hill, two blocks on College Hill. I lived on Keene Street. I weeded weeds, I planted grass on Keene Street. This isn't about, this isn't about a large swath of the city. This is about three houses. This is about culture. We're talking about what are the things that make people living in those three houses disrespect their neighbors in a way that causes us to be at this table here today and seek this forum as restitution for that harm caused. What I would like to see happen is neighbors come together and have a discussion about what living in harmony actually looks like, rather than penalizing poverty further. And I think the role of this city council is one to be a forum, it's excellent forum for these concerns to be heard, but to jump right to the conclusion that an ordinance needs to be passed in which privacy is violated, in which people feel as if they're more under surveillance, particularly black and brown bodies, which are already under plenty of surveillance as it is in the city. It's just unreasonable, honestly, and I think that it's a waste of your time, frankly. What I would like to see happen is the city council and the city government work with the university in creating some sort of dialogue program because ultimately that's what's going to have to happen. Students are going to continue to live in different parts of the city. Students are going to continue to party. Animal House is a reflection of society, not a creation of society. And that's going to continue to happen. Of course it's going to happen. There's going to be trash. There's going to be beer bottles on a Sunday morning. That's going to happen. And I think we all understand that. And I don't think the proponents are seeking monumental global change here. I think that they're seeking to be understood. And the way that that's going to happen is by talking with the students that live next to them instead of, I don't mean to dismiss them out of hand, but come crying to the city government looking for them to save them. Because in reality, that's not going to work. That's not going to be a solution in the long term. And long-term solutions are going to start with discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jesse Elderstein. Also left. Well, that was the last person on the sheet here. Right, so. Just know that everyone that wrote to us, we write your letters. Everyone that is here that has spoken before this committee, your comments are noted and taken very serious. So at this point, Madam Clerk, we will, I move to close the public hearing on this matter.
So moved.
Right?
Second.
No motion is needed. And Madam Clerk, being that there is no other items on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is made and second, all in favor, I oppose. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.